Site meets the minimum standards as far as compliance. There are things like bags of mulch, children's toys, stuff like that still scattered in the yard, but doesn't meet the definition of waste, refuse, garbage. So at this point, it's in compliance. We will continue to monitor it based on the past instances. We'll try to keep an eye on it to make sure it doesn't slide back, slide into a position where it does fall into a state of non-compliance. But again, I think a material that's in the yard now wouldn't be waste, trash, refuse. I know some of the board members have even been by the property in the last month as well, but we'll try to continue to keep, keep a look at it.
I want to thank you for it because it does look better, although this past weekend it started to trash back up again. So if you would maybe have somebody go by.
The direction of staff is anytime we're in that area, we're going to take a look at it.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, next on the list, I cannot understand the last name. It's a Jessie from Timber Creek Drive. I don't, I don't recognize the last name.
Is it Thorz?
Yes, she is.
Here she goes.
Thank you. Excuse me, ma'am, what is your last name again?
It's Znosko, Z-N-O-S-K-O.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
And Jessie, would you take your mask off while you're talking?
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't get to hear the other comments, but I'm here again to talk about the school funding. I really appreciate your support. Last meeting, that meant a lot to both myself and I know a lot of citizens and parents around the county. And so I thank you very, very much for that. Again, I'm just coming here to advocate for some action, you know, with the bills that are not going to move forward about the tax referendum. You know, we need to do something. The schools are, you know, we've seen pictures of mold in the school. It's not healthy for our teachers, for our kids to be in there. And I just plead with you to think about another option. You know, if it's a lodging tax, we can, you know, have some people that are coming into the county doing business. But there just has to be something that, that we need to do. We can't fail our children or our teachers. I can't imagine being able to feel valued when you're going into a building that's kind of falling apart from the inside out. And so I just urge you to just think about some other solutions. If there's something that citizens can do to help, you know, we've been parts of our contingency. Reverend Blakely went on a march in Richmond that started by the Fox Schools and it was interviewed to kind of bring light to the situation. I know it's not just Prince Edward County, but again, just pleading with you to think about something, what is some action that you all can do, that we can do to just make this a better place for everyone? Because when our schools fail, everything else fails too. You know, when I first moved here 12 years ago, all of my friends that I had here have moved away because of the school system, because they had kids. And so they got jobs elsewhere and moved. And so I don't, this is a great place to live. It's amazing. There's amazing community, great people. And, you know, this is just something that we all need to come together on and, and do something about for the sake of our children, our county, and the future here. So thank you very much again for your support. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak that hasn't signed? We have a few minutes. Okay, thank you much. We now move on to comments by board members. Ms. Patty Cooper.
Yes, I'd like to say good evening to everyone. Glad to see you here and really hope that you enjoy the meeting and it will be a satisfactory to some of you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody here. Thank you much for coming. Lou.
Good to see everyone tonight. I'm glad you turned up and hope we can get our meeting underway and have a good look at the end of the day. Thank you.
I just want to say welcome and thank you all for coming. I also want to thank you for your involvement in local government, whether it's through public participation or public hearings. Your input is needed and it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I'd like to just add to what Beverly's saying in that we need information from out in the field there. And we do appreciate your coming and giving us input. Thank you.
With the two speakers that spoke earlier about our school funding, I'd like to, of course, Delegate Edmonds did a great job of trying to get this bill passed for us. It's kind of a disappointment. We've got neighboring counties that prior years got this bill passed and now have the one cent sales tax. And they're rural counties like us. And we really needed that money to come in from that manner to help fund our schools without putting a major burden on our taxpayers. And we're going to look at ways of funding what we can do, but obviously this was a step back for us. But any, I appreciate y'all being here tonight.
Just like to say thank you for being here and echo with Supervisor Jones on the referendum on the one cent tax. There's no doubt that Delegate Edmonds is going to have, will retable that again. That's not going to go away because that's, that's him. He endorsed that. And I feel like at some point that will come to fruition.
Hope so.
Yeah. So thank you for your participation and continue to support your local government's body.
Just a, just a thanks, just to piggyback what everybody else has said, I believe, issue. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for your input. Thank you for also Delegate Edmonds for working for us, suggested he could. Sorry that it didn't work. If you all have any, any ideas as it started to get brought up, there's anything that we don't know about, please write it to us. Sometimes you all can find out things that we may not find out soon enough or whatever. So we encourage you to do so. Thank you all.
Madam Chair, I have a comment here that Doug and me had talked about earlier. May I read it, please? If y'all will take a moment with me here, I would like to take a moment to congratulate and recognize our hometown Longwood University Women's and Men's Basketball Team. Both teams catch, captured their Big South Conference Basketball Championship and both are heading to their respective NCAA tournament for the first time ever. With Longwood heading into the March Madness, I encourage everyone in Prince Edward County and Fall to let these young women and men, their coach and the university community know how proud we are and that we are supporting them every step of the way. This, this is a good form of education and these young people are really doing an outstanding job. I'm very proud of them. Thank you for your time.
Lou, thank you so much for the comment. I was in town yesterday and I heard all of these sirens. I didn't know what was going on. There were two buses. So what, I thought that was a major accident. And when I got home and realized what had happened, it was a sight to see. Thank you so much. And I just wanted to add the comment, Delegate Edmonds worked so hard for us. Two weeks ago, Mr. Stanley, Dr. Johnson, the Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Lucy Carson, the head of the school board, and I went down 5:30 that morning. We were a little disappointed, but we are going to keep fighting until we see that that's done. Because our children in Prince Edward County mean so much to us. Thank you, board members, for your comments. At this time, we look at our consent agenda. We've looked over that. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move.
Madam Chair, one, one quick question. On page 20, we have a, I don't know what we need to do. We have Bobby as being present and then on the very next, we have him as being absent. Do we need to do that on the page 20 as being remote? Is that how we need to do that?
I believe it's beginning of the meeting, stated that he should remove the question for that.
Right. So on page 20, then we just need to have beside his as, as being remote rather than present.
I believe it's in the paragraph below.
It's in the paragraph. It is, but it states him as being present. What, it's conflict is what I'm trying to say.
I guess he's, technically, he's present. He's just not present in the room. He's voting he's present.
Voting present.
Right. Right. Thank you so much, Dave. Okay, may I have a call again for the motion?
So move.
Second. Okay, so motion and second. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Myself? Yes. So the motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have highway matters. Scott Preprick, our VDOT resident engineer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair and Board.
Good evening.
I was going to try to put this on before I came up here. I guess there's no point now. So got a good update for you. I wasn't with you guys last month, but we've been, since January, we've been battling a lot of snow, but thankfully that looks like it's starting to be the point of the year where that may be behind us. I guess it's not April yet, but you never know. But, so I was going to tell you, if I would have been with you last month, I would have said between New Year's and that meeting that we, that I would have attended, we had done, we had our crews out nine times to battle snow. We're up to 10 for the year. So it's been a busy snow year for us. But since then, we've been running the Boomax on our secondary routes and then trimming behind it to try to get the limbs back. We've also been adding shoulder stone in areas where edge ruts have been coming up on our routes. We've also been running the graders every chance we can on the secondaries that are gravel. The, there was a point where it was almost too wet to machine the roads, but we were adding stone regularly in the muddy areas, trying to keep them passable. We were able to keep everything passable at all times, which was good. But we did receive a pretty high number of complaints when we were getting those back to back to back snow events and then rain events mixed in too. It looks like we're kind of getting past that. We've been able to machine. We have about half of the unpaved roads machined and back in good shape right now. It takes us about two and a half weeks to grade them all. So we're about halfway done going through them all. Mr. Townsend mentioned needing to do some ditch work on Route 724. We haven't got to that. We have machined that road. We just haven't got the ditch cleaned out like we'd like to. Route 604 to widen those shoulders, Ms. Pride, we've, we're looking at getting back on that work in April. We're probably going to be able to do another half to mile this year, starting in April, heading from where we left off towards 15. And then some of the limbing work we've been doing is on Prospect Road and Turkey Truck Road. We were out there today. Mr. Townsend, I also need to thank you guys for all the litter pickup work you've been doing. We've been picking those bags up behind you. We've also been running an inmate crew and we used a contractor to pick up bags on the primaries recently. Our contractor picked up 580 bags just on 460 and 360. So it's a lot, lot of litter out there to pick up. But thank you for your help with that. We installed Gabion baskets on Route 651, Chincapin Road, and we armored up the slope of the road there to protect it from the creek. Get a lot of flooding in on that road. We're starting to have, the slope was starting to erode. So we protected that. So we shouldn't have to deal with it in the future. Mill Creek Road is a real rustic that the cold weather caught us on in the fall. This spring, probably right after we work on 604, we're going to try to shoot that and get the surface shot. We got all the stone placed on it last year. So we'll be back out on, on that road sometime in the April timeframe as well. Then the only other thing I was going to update you guys on was some traffic engineering work orders that I placed based on you guys' comments. A while back, Mr. Townsend brought a concern about 15 South with the intersection of Route 634 needing an intersection ahead sign. So I submitted that to traffic engineering. Any, any requests like that, I like to run it through their office to get their review. That way it all gets treated the same. It's not just my opinion. It's, it's theirs. They studied it based on the current road conditions, roadside development, measured site distance, traffic volumes, if there was any evidence of motors having difficulties. And then they pulled the crash history there and there, there wasn't really a big number of incidents. The way they worded it was that there was a lack of reported crash activity. And then I didn't know this, it must have been before I started with VDOT, but there, we had made some improvements out there in 2019. So they were able to take that into their, into their review and consider, you know, their considerations. But they didn't recommend placing an intersection ahead sign, but there is some limbs on Route 634 that they're, they're saying we should cut some brush back, get the limbs back. And then also the, if you're on 634, looking across 15 on the side of the road, there's like a two, two-way arrow. They want us to replace that. I guess it's, you know, past its life expectancy. So we're going to replace that sign and do that brush removal work there. We had some other work orders in for Route 621, Great Plone Road. We just installed the Chevrons that were recommended for some curves on that road. And then there's two that are outstanding, Route 662, Levi Road and Route 623, Twin Bridges Road. I haven't got those back yet. So I just, I just wanted to update you guys with where we were at on, on that. But at this time, I'll open up to you guys. If you have comments or concerns, feel free to share them with me.
Before anyone else speaks, Scott, I want to make a comment. I called Mr. Stanley this week about Heights School Road. That road was cleaned to perfection. I have never seen that road in that condition, I think in my life. And to go through there and see that road like that, it was wonderful. Now, was that VDOT or was it the jail, Jerry?
I think he did.
God answer that response.
They give credit where credit's due. That was one that, when we, when Mr. Townsend started policing the routes, he told me if there was ever one that needed to be done, to let them know. And we had got two complaints on that route that week. So I let Mr. Townsend know and he picked it up for us and we just followed behind him and got the bags. So there's a partnership there a little bit, but I'll give him all the credit.
Okay.
Partnership.
I want to thank you because I was going to call the next day and I was headed to Appomattox. And when I got near the end of that road, I couldn't believe it. So thanks so much. Wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Town.
Okay, thanks to, thank goodness, the finish one that does do the work.
Okay. Any, any other, other supervisors? Yes, Lou?
On Pin Oak Road, the sign is laying in a ditch that says unmarked pavement ahead.
Okay.
And there was another one somewhere else, but I can't remember where it was. One more thing, I know you don't want to hear it, but I'm going to tell you anyway. I talked with Sheriff last night and 307 and 460 is turning into a daily event.
Okay.
And what, what is happening, people are still not realizing they need to be in the left lane and all of a sudden they're slowing down and then they got people running into the back end of them.
Okay, got you.
Really. I'm going to give you my two cents worth for what it's worth. It needs to be a right-hand turning lane there and get the two lanes going west back open.
Okay. Well, I'll write that comment down. I've, I've been communicating back and forth with traffic engineering and we had just made those improvements where we added rumble strips and increased the signs and installed the shield markings. And we're kind of just, kind of in a review period, but your comments not falling on deaf ears. We're trying to give those last improvements a little time to see if they're working. From what you're saying, it being a daily event, you know?
Yeah. That was his comment to me.
Okay. So, yeah. Well, I'll try to get my hands on the, the accident reports and, and get those in traffic engineering's hands.
Madam Chair, if I can add on to that. And I talked to Sheriff as well, Lou. There's an advisory speed of 45, but it's still 55 miles an hour through there. Lowering the, Sheriff felt lowering the speed limit would give more reaction time. Now, whether it's practical in a location like that to do that on, on 460, but that would give them more time to react to either coming up on that concrete pavement or coming up on the back of somebody else. So again, people are still going to go 65, but trying to encourage them to reduce that speed. At least then the Sheriff's Office could be out there and run radar and have a little bit of enforcement and possibly get the traffic slowed down a little bit, five or 10 miles an hour.
And in one of my last conversations with traffic engineering, I talked about a speed reduction out there. And it, it wouldn't be outside of the lines of something that's been done before. Like if you head towards Virginia Beach, there's an area where the speed limit drops down and you get through the zone and it goes back up. And out towards Bedford, where I think the Blue Ridge Parkway peels off, it goes down to one lane, very similar to what we have at 307. And that does have a reduced speed limit there too. So it's something that they, they're in the process of considering that. I don't want to say it's going to happen or not going to happen, but it's being reviewed.
Sheriff's in the back guaranteed write a letter of recommendation, right Sheriff?
Yeah. So, well, I got that and I wrote it down. Any, any other comments from the board?
It's got 633, Mount Pleasant.
The, the shoulders out there with that logging operation?
That, and they have some, you have some breakage where they don't broke, where the road are broken up from the heavy trucks.
Okay.
They need to do some patchwork.
Gotcha. Okay.
Not a lot, but some.
Yeah, okay.
Should be between 15 and Fauclin.
Okay.
In that, in that area.
Gotcha.
Scott Featherfin Road, if you would, check that, please.
Okay. For being broke up or?
Yeah, and they said that the gravel part up there needed gravel on it. I've heard from several people who've called in the last two weeks.
Okay. Gotcha.
Any other comments?
All right. Well, thank you, Board.
Okay, thank, thank you so much, Scott. We have about three or four minutes before our public hearing, and I'm going to move down to the next thing on the agenda, old business, what Robert loved, the special use permit, if we could do that at this time.
Madam Chair and members of the board, in your table, in your package of information on page 120 and also in your addendum on page 226, we received a number of additional letters, some in opposition and some in support of the application. The application being meat processing facility proposed by Beverly and Kadir Abdu Sabar to construct and operate a meat processing facility. Since your last meeting, the applicant has been meeting with area residents, county administrator, and also the IDA. They've been meeting with the residents to go over issues that were raised at the public hearing. They've also been talking to the IDA about a potential new location in the county industrial park. I know this, that's still underway. I don't think any agreements have been reached. And the applicant may need additional time to see if this is a viable alternative site can be identified. I'll be glad to answer any questions. But again, mostly what's come in is, is the comments from the residents and folks in the area. Also in your package, we put the conditions again as recommended by the planning commission. I believe the applicant is here tonight to maybe can give you a, a direct update on where they are in negotiations with the IDA and the residents.
So, Mr. Abdu Sabar, would you like to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Since our last meeting, since it was last year, last month, had an opportunity to meet with several citizens in the community and as Mr. Love indicated, members of city, or county governments, excuse me. And we potentially have a location that we're working with the IDA on. I, I ask that the board table the vote tonight until the next meeting, if, if that's okay, so that we can so that we can continue to pursue the option that we're trying to look at. We recognize all of the outcry by every single printing of the paper since last month and all of the comments that we've received from various people in all the different meetings, that it's a significant impact on the community. So we hope to be good neighbors and good stewards, and we want to try to continue to work with the IDA and yourselves to see if we can find a better, a more palatable location. So with your permission, I request that we move to next month, where I can come before you and say yea or nay, if that's okay, if it pleases the board.
So are you asking the board to table it until next month?
Yes, ma'am, if that's okay, yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we table it until next month.
I'll say that.
Okay, so we moved an instruction that we table this until next month. Ms. Patty Huber?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby? Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Lou, second.
Odessa, yes. So this will be moved and tabled to next month. And thank you, Mr. Abdu Sabar. Appreciate it much. Take care, ma'am. Okay, at this time, we will move to our public hearing. Mayor Sarah Pocket will give us a report on redistricting. Sarah. Sarah, you just want to wait until they exit? So we'll have interruption?
While I clean up the house.
He's waiting for a dog show.
Okay, Sarah, we're ready.
Madam Chairs, the board is aware tonight is the date of the first of two advertised public hearings to provide the opportunity for citizen input on the update of the county's redistricting plan and the comprehensive amendments to Chapter 42 Elections of the County Code. The legal descriptions of each district contained in the ordinance represent the plan that was recommended by the citizen committee. And so tonight, the board will wish to hold the public hearing, but no action is necessary by the board this evening.
Okay.
And let me get the public hearing sign-up sheet. Here's nobody signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
They can hear you, Dr. Brown.
Okay, you may speak. Would you give your name, please? Would you repeat that a little more clearly? Okay, would you speak up again, please? I don't think this person is addressing.
We can't take flights.
That's right, we can't. We can't.
This is not addressing this.
That's right.
Okay, do we move forward, Sarah?
The only, I guess you can close the public hearing, and then I just have one more comment.
Sure. We will close the public hearing. Sarah, give us final comment.
So I would ask the board members if you could please take a moment to actually read, kind of, turn by turn, the description. You know your districts better than anyone. You've driven them, you've visited everybody, you know every road, you know every bump in the road. And so, as careful as we've tried to be, I would ask you if you could please take a minute to just sit down and read the turn-by-turn description of the meets and bounds of your districts, just to help us make sure that we haven't made an inadvertent error, you know, on a road name or a route number or a turn, you know. And if you need a better map, just let us know, and we'll be happy to provide that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah.
Yes, ma'am.
Any comments, any questions? Thank you so much. Public hearing is closed. At this time, we are here from the Department of Social Services, Kimberly Allen, Director. Is she here? Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and the rest of the board. It's good to be back in front of you guys tonight. I wanted to come to you just to give you a brief update on some things that are going on in our agency, and also wanted to share with you some data that came about in our local agency profile report. Our benefits and services units have been busy with everything from working up applications for assistance, investigating abuse and neglect situations, screening elderly clients for long-term care services, connecting clients with community resources and services, and a whole host of additional tasks. And I'm proud to say that we have one of the best and most reputable agencies in the central region and state. We receive quarterly dashboard reports from the state. That's a compilation of our timeliness and our accuracy with all of our cases. And we are typically ranked at the top of the list each and every quarter. One of the biggest updates I wanted to share with you guys is with the closing of the federal public health emergency we're expecting in April, we face the daunting unwinding process related to Medicaid renewals and applications and eligibility. Those renewals have been put on hold since March of 2020, so anybody that was receiving Medicaid at that time has been able to keep their Medicaid regardless of their change in circumstances. With the ending of the public health emergency, we will have to work towards doing all of those renewals. And right now, it's kind of a mess. The state hasn't given us a whole lot to go off of, but we are working in conjunction with them to provide clear and consistent messaging to our recipients so that they're prepared and they're aware of the changes that are gonna come down the pike for them. The only thing we do know at this point in time is that the state, DMAS, the Department of Medical Assistance Services, is gonna be sending out mailers to all of the enrollees. The problem that we face is that those enrollees, a lot of them have moved and haven't updated their addresses and things like that. So as we come up on those renewals, we will have an interesting task in front of us of trying to get in touch with those folks to make sure that their renewals are done timely. And we know that it's gonna cause a lot of frustration, confusion from all angles, from workers, from recipients, from the state. It could provide a whole lot of headaches in regards to appeals. We do anticipate that some people will lose their eligibility for Medicaid, and it might be unexpected to them. So we're ready to face that and work through that with them. I just encourage each of you, if you have constituents that do share frustrations, concerns, or complaints, that you have them reach out to us, and we'll try to walk through it with them in their specific case. In regards to our local agency profile report, I believe you guys have a copy of it in your board packet. It's for fiscal year '21, and it's the most comprehensive report we have at this point that discusses the benefits, the services, and the spending that we at Social Services have encountered historically, but especially in FY '21. And I wanted to highlight just a bit of the data for you. If you turn to the middle of the report, page five specifically references the applications for benefit programs such as SNAP, Medicaid, and TANF. And if you see that all of those were consistent over the course of the year, the number of applications that came in. I will share that in the current fiscal year, we've seen a steady, we've seen applications remain steady with slight increases, and that's likely due to the result of the ongoing COVID-19 economic impacts. On page six, that's where we get to the meat and potatoes of things, and it shows that we have just under 7,000 residents, which is approximately 30% of our population, who are receiving one or more types of benefits. This number has increased approximately 3% to 4% each year over the last few years with Medicaid, with the Medicaid program being the largest increase in participation, and that's a direct result of Medicaid expansion funding over the last few years. In contrast, the SNAP participation number was on the steady decline, or on the ever-so-slight decline, I should say, until this past year. And again, that's likely the result of COVID-19 economic impacts. In regard to our family services program, on page seven, we, it identifies the vulnerable children and adults who were served through permanency efforts and protective services. And if you look, we specifically had 10 children in foster care during this fiscal year. And I'm happy to say those numbers now are, have decreased due to some adoption finalizations and some permanency for some of those children. We support, we supported approximately 38 families with special needs adoption assistance during fiscal year, and that includes maintenance payments and supportive services. And in regard to our child protective services and adult protective services, 214 vulnerable children and 54 vulnerable adults were identified through formal assessments and investigations. But I will say that these numbers in regard to family services don't include prevention efforts made through short-term crisis stabilization, nor do they capture general intake requests and navigation efforts by our social workers for things like homelessness, for food and emergency food and medication, or the need for referrals to other community resources. And the last thing I wanted to touch on in the profile report is the spending piece of it. At the end of the report, it shows that approximately $66 million was spent on social services in Prince Edward County. Of that $66 million, approximately $884,000 was local dollars spent. And in the pie charts at the bottom, give you the breakdown of the spending. And I want to highlight that the first pie chart at the bottom shows that 96.2% of the total spending was on direct client-related benefits, such as SNAP, Medicaid, and TANF, with just 3.7% in overhead administrative cost. And when we break down the local dollars, you can see that the local contribution of the $884,000 was right at 1.4% of the total spending. So all of this means that Prince Edward County is getting a lot for their, a bang for their buck in regards to the local spending with our DSS budget. I wanted to present this information. I know budget season is upon us. I wanted just to present this data so you guys would have it as you go into that time and that season to be appropriating money and allocating money for our agency. And I wanted you to see the value of the local dollar at work for the residents of Prince Edward County. Our budget proposal has been submitted, and it doesn't look too different or far off from this. I will say we are losing some federal funding in the new fiscal year as a result of the Family First budget lines being rolled into our regular staff and operations budget. So there's some small increases and things like that that will be included in our budget request. Also, we know that Governor Northam, part of his budget was to include salary increases, and so we have asked for that, and we hope that you will support that. We hope the General Assembly will also support that and that that will be something to look after our employees. And other than these changes and some slight operational costs, like I said, the proposed budget looks very similar to these numbers right here in this packet. So I thank you for your time. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And if you look at that report further and have questions, feel free to reach out to me. I know it's a lot of information and a lot of data presented all at one time.
I have a question. Know the needs of Medicaid are great. How are you assuring that the people are gonna be notified who really, really need it?
So DMAS has identified, they've sent out a strategic plan. The Department of Medical Assistance Services has sent out a strategic plan with us sending out messaging to our recipients now on the local level through phone communication and through our interactions, the social workers and stuff like that. As far as DMAS is concerned, they're gonna be sending out mailings regularly to folks that are on their roles or rosters for that, to let them know, hey, you haven't had to do a renewal in two years, but it's gonna happen. And what we're, our understanding is that renewal process will last one whole year. So they will do renewals gradually. So it won't mean that you'll get shut off immediately. It'll mean that you're gonna be given your renewal time, and you'll have to follow through with that. And if you don't, there will be a process for appeal. And some of those people will probably be able to maintain their eligibility if it's something like they weren't able to be located in order to do their renewal and things like that. But we're really looking to DMAS to give us that guidance. They're taking the lead in this as far as getting the information out, and we're just trying to use that same clear messaging to our clients when we're having interactions with them.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for that explanation.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Okay, at this time, social waste update, Jeff Jones, our solid waste general manager.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Good evening.
Just like to come to y'all with some updates of what we've been doing with solid waste. The month of January, at the landfill, we took in 2,643 tons of trash. And the month of February, we took in 3,148 tons. So we're up a little bit by about 100 loads from January to February. The month of February, February the 15th, we had a DEQ inspection. So far, everything went fine, reports looked good, the DEQ inspector was happy. We got a report back from Lobella, which is our new engineering firm, with their compaction rate, which is 1,700 pounds per square yard, which is up about 200 pounds per square yard from the last time the survey was done at the landfill. So of course, that's gonna increase airspace the longer the sales will last. We're averaging about 16 to 18 tons of scrap metal a month. We have plans to go to Donlton Heights. Well, it was planned for tomorrow, but if it rains, we're gonna go the next day, sometime this week, and put a new pipe in where the entrance to the convenience site. And we're actually gonna pull a 30-foot piece out and put a 40-foot piece in to give cars and trucks more room to turn into the gate so they won't crush the end of it. We're gonna reditch it and regravel the road going in. We've had some equipment issues the last couple of days. The new compactor we bought had a transmission problem, and we found out today it was a transmission fluid pump. So we have the pump ordered. Carter came today and did the testing and everything on it with the valves and pressure gauges and stuff that I can't do. They came today and tested all of that for me. And the pump will be in Thursday, and the weekend, mobile mechanic is coming Sunday to replace the pump and put the new lines and seals in the transmission pump. And he's doing that on a regular, the Carter salesman is helping me out, and he's doing that on a regular hourly rate. It's not gonna be anything extra there. Already shipping the part to me for free, and the pump in, but about $1,200. So that's better than what it could be. I mean, it's not great, but it's better than what it could be. But like he said, he said it could have been an O-ring windbad, you know. And I also found out from the previous maintenance guy that worked on the compactor before we bought it, that the transmission was replaced 3,500 hours ago. We sent off oil samples, and the oil samples came back with no shavings, no clutch plates, no torque converter particles. So the oil in the transmission is clean, and it's in really good shape. So this pump ought to put us exactly where we need to be to keep rolling along pretty good. And that compactor weighs 96,000 pounds versus 50,000 pounds of what we're compacting with now. So our compaction rate should tremendously go up over the next year or so as they survey. So that's gonna be a big help, is us having to build sales faster. It's gonna take that away. We'll be able to stay where we're at longer versus having to build sales faster. So it's gonna actually save us money. Because I got a report from Lobella the other day that I think their plan is, what they projected to build the next sale is like 1.3 million or something like that. So the more we can make and save on that, put back in the construction budget, construction fund will be about, the longer the sale we're at in there lasts. So other than that, everything seems to be rolling along pretty smoothly. We haven't had any other issues or whatnot, so.
What was going on with the closing of the entrance to the worship site yesterday? I mean, you couldn't go in, you had to go up on the hill, and that was filling up?
We closed that gate when the compactor's full so the truck driver doesn't have to deal with traffic coming in and trying to go in front of him. When we hook to the compactor and pull the compactor out, because it's such a tight space right there, when he pulls up and lets it hook down, hook to the compactor can, he takes the whole parking lot between the fence and where the back of the compactor is. So when he's switching canes in there, we normally put that barrel in and let everybody go up to the top so it's safer for him driving in and out, turning and unmoving cans around.
Well, it was causing a jam up on the hill with bigger trucks coming in, so.
Right.
I was just curious.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep. Any, any questions?
Those weights you gave us, is that county waste and outside waste, or just?
That's everything total.
Okay. What percentage of that reckon is outside waste? I was just curious.
I couldn't tell you. I can figure it up and let y'all know if you want me to, but, um, the scrap metal is all us.
Right.
The tonnage on the scrap metal is everything from Prince Edward County, plus what we pull out of the landfill ourselves. If we get a load that comes in, it's got a lot of metal in it, we'll take your clam buckets separated ourselves, because we don't want the metal in the landfill because of the iron. It makes our water samples bad. And the first quarter gas samples just came in too, and we have zero methane. So that is a very good thing also. So, but yeah, that's just all total waste.
Okay, still, yeah.
Yeah. We're averaging about anywhere from 35 to 65 loads a day.
Wow.
Depending, I mean, depending on our days.
Is it feasible to sell that scrap metal or not?
We do. Yep. Actually, Jay and Jay, we do have a dealing with Jay and Jay. Yes, sir. Yep, we sell it all. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jeff, for that report. Appreciate that.
Y'all have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, building and grounds update, Randy Cook.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board.
Good evening.
We're here to, just to update you on the tasks we've been working on these past few months. The convenience site sheds at Tuggle, Green Bay, and Verso have been completed and installed. We've trimmed brush from hanging over the fences at all the convenience sites and are currently looking to improve the signage at the sites. We installed a battery backup on the HVAC control systems at the Department of Social Services building, and that has solved our heating and cooling issues that we had there. We pre-treated with salt before the snows, and that worked well in keeping our walkways, parking lots clear, and helped us when we had to come and, and push the lights and everything. So that worked real well for us. Recently, I purchased a salt spreader, light, it was used, but it's light new, it's a really good one, to go in the hitch of the trucks. It'll help us in doing that with the different parking lots and areas we have to deal with. In the courthouse, we have finished the community development center over here, and they moved into their offices. We're currently painting the third floor offices to get everyone in their new home. We continue to fog the courthouse and common areas on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings. We're wiping down high-touch areas in the courthouse daily, and more often is needed. We're cleaning and responding to cleaning problem areas as they arise. The signs outside the courthouse are 100% complete, and the signs inside are 99% complete. We have just a few that we have to put up or change. The filters in our VAV boxes have all been changed, and our air handling unit filters are scheduled to be changed in May, as are our filters in our other buildings. We're looking to get the courthouse power washed to remove the grime from the limestone areas and recuff the joints. Mr. Buzak is looking at making us roof finals, because the ones up there have deteriorated, come apart. He's got to actually make one before he can tell us how much it's going to cost us. So he has agreed to do that, and we'll, we'll see how that comes out. He's been working on that for a couple of months. We trimmed the bushes around the backside of the courthouse. We have mulch, and we'll start mulching that in the next few weeks. The telephone installation should start tomorrow, but I have not been given any kind of completion date yet. He's just told me he'll, he's coming in to look at our telecom room and get started putting in equipment. The valves and taps were installed today to prepare for the replacement of the chiller and to keep, you know, our downtime in the hot weather to a minimum. Our moors have been serviced and are ready to go for the seed, season, and we've been meeting with contractors to price construction needs of the county, chillers, boilers, and that, other needs that we have.
Okay.
Any questions?
Y'all have been pretty busy.
Doug keeps me busy, yeah.
Call that dial security.
Thank you so much, Randy. Okay, the AFID grant.
Come on back up, Randy.
Come on back up. Sir and Randy.
As soon as the board will recall, last month, we talked about the AFID grant from the Virginia Department of Agriculture that will help us fund a new boiler for the cannery. We had estimated originally, I think based on pricing that Randy had gotten just verbally, that it might cost us about $130,000. But if you look on page 145 in your board pack, these are the bids that the county received on March the 2nd. And we ended up doing procurement for both a oil-fired boiler and an LP-fired boiler. So I'm going to let Randy.
And the reason we got into that is when I was meeting with contractors out there to do the oil-fired boiler, to get a price, they were like, you know, why don't you go with the LP-fired? It's cleaner, easier to get parts. We've had problems this year getting parts for our boiler here at the courthouse. I was without a pump for one of our boilers for two months, because they just didn't have it. So we were running on one boiler, we had to have Valley Boiler come and clean the other one, because it just suited up real bad. It's just been hard to get parts for these, you know, oil-fired boilers. So, the industry is going to the LP side, and, you know, as what I'm told me, he says, he says, you got to find a real old guy that knows how to work on a, on an oil-fired boiler. Young guys don't want to do it. But it's a cleaner energy, less maintenance, and so that's why we decided we put both of them in that packet.
So as the board will see on, on page 145, the low bid for the LP is 94,200. We know that we will also have to add a tank in the lines, and Randy's done the research on that to make a recommendation for, there will be an additional cost to installing the LP.
You'll have to have two 1,000-gallon tanks to run the boiler that has been proposed here. It is a 1,470,000 BTU boiler. So you got to have that much space to, to be able to, for the LP to vaporize so that we can use it. Foster fuel for two tanks, and the labor to install it was, this is just a budget price, $17,070. Ellington Energy for two tanks was $16,776. And Parker Oil for a new tank, two new tanks, are $12,487. Refurbished tanks was $7,127.
What size tank you said you were?
1,000 each. So it'd be two?
2,000.
2,000 gallons. Now, the price of LP, you know, it changes, but it's been cheaper than fuel.
Yeah.
We've been paying, I think 265 is what we've been paying recently to use it at social services and at our visitor's center.
Well, I do know everyone is going to LP. They leaving oil.
Yeah.
Yeah, fuel, that's, you know.
Who provides the social services and the visitor's center?
Well, it's whoever I get to bid from that's cheapest.
Okay.
Most of the time, and, and that's because we own our tanks.
Right.
Now, this, this, these costs are owning our tanks.
Right.
Now, if we just bid with, with, say, Ellington and let them put their tank in, we would have to pay for the tanks.
Right.
We'll just pay whatever their price is.
Right.
You know, and it's a negotiated price for the county. And you could bid Foster, Ellington, and Parker once a year for the tanks, but they're not going to want to change their tanks out, 1,000-gallon, 2,000-gallon tanks, but I'd hope they'd give us a good bid if it did. So, you know, it's, it's whether we want to, per se, they call it renting the tank, but really, they're not going to rent it to us, they're just going to give it to us, or buying our own tank and installing it, and buying gas from whoever we want to buy gas from.
Are these prices including full tanks?
No, they're not. No, they're not. Well, you can fill the tank now at 265, or whatever the price is, and come summer, when this job is done, if the oil is, is 205, you'll feel like, oh, well, I shouldn't have filled it up yet.
What, how long would a 2,000-gallon tank last? What's the length of it? 30 days? What's?
I would hope that it lasts 30 days. It seems like to me, we've got 500 gallons in there now of fuel, and that lasts three to four weeks. Now, this is with the Virginia Food Works. This is not with our citizens at the cannery and Virginia Food Works, as will be in June, July, August, when gardens are in. So that they'd be running more and providing more steam. And Virginia Food Works has been doing a lot of, of business out there lately.
So, let me, so, Ellington wants 17,000. That's the cost of the tank? Like, we, we purchase?
That, that is the tank and installation. His tanks are 600 and 6, $6,600 each.
Now, if we purchase fuel from them, it's free, be free?
Yeah, but we got to keep purchasing fuel from him. You have to hear.
Most of them do that.
Yeah.
I mean, very few of them don't do that. That's where they get the fuel.
Yes, yes, installed, yes.
But Parker actually has the best price on the tank.
Parker has the best price on the tanks, yes. And, well, he was pricing refurbished tanks.
Refurbished tanks.
On one of them, 12,000 for new tanks, 7,000 for refurbished.
Well, even the 12,000 is less than.
Right.
The other two. Thing about it is, if you buy the tanks as opposed to leasing, and I've got a tank myself, you can go out and get bids and get some pretty good prices.
Right.
Once you get, or you're using their tanks and whatnot.
Yeah, they could.
You're locked into their price, and that.
Well, you may not be locked in, you might could, you know, threaten to change or go ahead and change, but they're not going to want to take those tanks out.
Yeah.
Hey, if they're not giving us a good price, you know, they might have to. So.
So flipping back to page 143, I'm going to say there are a series of sequence decisions that the board will wish to consider. So number one would be whether to proceed with this capital equipment investment for the cannery. At this point, you have an idea of the price of the new boiler, less the $25,000, which is the amount that we receive for the AFID grant. So that would be your first decision is to move forward.
I make a motion to move forward with installing new furnace at the, new boiler at the cannery.
LP, the LP.
And so that would be your second decision is, if yes, what type of boiler do you wish to?
LP.
Yeah, I think LP the way to go.
Yeah.
And then do you wish to rent or own your?
That's the question. If I had to do it with my own money, I would rent them.
And it's not going to be till June before they get this boiler, so, you know, if we need to, to get it.
You always can buy it.
A little different, so.
That's just me. Most, most families, most businesses, they rent them.
We, we own the tanks at Social Services, and I think we own the one here at the visitor's center.
And they the same size?
No, the, Social Services is two, two 1,000, and Visitor Center is 500.
Jerry, I, I'm involved, you know, I got a tank too. The situation is, there are some huge differences when you go out to bid for, you know, for gas and whatnot. If you're locked into one place and so forth, you don't get that. So I, I feel just the opposite. I think you're better off buying your tank.
Maybe get the refurbished ones.
Yeah, exactly. We could probably save seven, eight, nine, 10,000.
Same as new. They got to pass the spec.
Exactly, they do.
So, Mr. James, if we could maybe get you to include that in your motion so that we...
To purchase the, so I'll include that also.
I second that also.
Okay, so moved in second that we do the refurbished tanks. All those, Patty?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So moved.
And then, Madam Chair, if we could have a motion, please, to approve the acceptance of the AFID grant and authorize the county administrator to execute all grant and procurement documents on behalf of the county.
So moved. We'll second.
Okay, moved in second. Patty?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Pride, yes. So moved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the VATA grant. Mr. Stanley.
Madam Chair, at its meeting on September 14 of 2021, the Board of Supervisors committed up to 2,000,500 of its coronavirus local physical recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, as a match for a $15 million Virginia Telecommunication Initiative, or VATI, grant match for the provision of broadband service to Prince Edward County. The project includes Prince Edward, Cumberland, and Lunenburg Counties. The project required a minimum of a 20% local match, or $3 million. Initially, we had, everybody gone in with a request to bump that number up, thinking that we had to be more competitive. And Governor Northam, who was governor at the time, threw in additional funds to the VATI program. So at the end of the day, almost all of the VATI requests were approved, but still required the 20% match. There's a table there on page 147, middle of the page, that shows Cumberland, Lunenburg, and Prince Edward, the number of houses or businesses served, the number of miles of fiber in each, the initial Connects match request, and the approved match. As you can see, Cumberland was requested 1 May 195, and they approved 200,000. Lunenburg was 1,651,500, and they approved a match of 800,000. We're the only one that actually gave the match that was requested. But if you look at the totals, it was 3.153 million. It was just over the threshold required, which was the three to provide the 20% match. At the meeting on December 14, the board approved a proposal from Connects to provide broadband services to unserved and underserved areas of Prince Edward as outlined. The board also approved a resolution of support and performance agreement with the IDA of Prince Edward County relating to the performance agreement, and performance agreement for the Connects broadband project, tobacco commission loan in the amount of $4 million. The IDA board has approved the request, and we're waiting in closing of that loan. Hopefully, it will happen here in the next few weeks. The Commonwealth Regional Council, CRC, is the grant recipient from the Department of Housing and Community Development on this VATI grant. At this point in time, they're asking each of the three counties to approve the attached VATI grant agreement, which outlines the role of CRC, including project coordination administration, including acting as fiscal agent and grant management. So CRC will handle all the funding, all the paperwork with the state. They will be reimbursed from the grant from the state, so that's a good thing, is that CRC will be made whole by them. The role of Connects as a contractor and the counties in funding their share of the local matches approved by DHCD as part of the grant. The council, the county also received an invoice from CRC in the amount of 422,16297, as Prince Edward's share of the initial payment for cost incurred by Connects for the project. Connects is currently purchasing material for the project. If you've been by their site on East Third Street, there are spools after spools after spools of fiber and other equipment that are sitting on their yard to allow them to move forward with the project. With the need of the, we need the Board of Supervisors to appropriate funding from the first half of ARPA funding that was received in 2021. That was about 2.2 million. This time, we're asking for $1 million to be authorized, and they'll allow us to pay that first invoice as well. There's the draft motion, the packet. I will say that Sands Anderson, representative of the county, who's helped us on the broadband project, has reviewed and made changes to the VATI agreement between CRC, the three counties, and Mr. Garrett, as president of Connects. With that, I'd be happy, happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, at this time, could I entertain a motion?
I move that the Board of Supervisors approved the VATI grant agreement as outlined and authorized the county administrator to sign on behalf of Prince Edward County. I further move that the board approve an appropriation of $1 million in ARPA funds for the Connects broadband project and payment of the CRC invoice in the amount of $422,162.97 as outlined.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Patty?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Bobby?
Jerry?
Yes.
Yes. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Public safety radio system. Mr. Stanley and Trey Powell.
I'm going to let Trey take the lead on this one.
All right, good evening, board.
Good evening.
The current public safety radio communication system in place for both the fire rescue and the sheriff's office leave several issues in the county, countywide. These issues do not give responders the ability to communicate effectively with the communications center. The proposed digital UHF P twenty-five system will have multiple repeater sites all over the county, thus giving our responders the security they need to be able to use the radio system when they need it. The existing fire rescue system is outdated and become obsolete and the current, and currently only has one channel. The proposed system will provide fire rescue with additional repeated channels, allowing responders clear, uninterrupted communications on larger incidents. Or in times of multiple incidents, this current system can become overwhelmed with traffic causing delays in radio transmissions. The current sheriff's office digital UHF P twenty-five system operates off one tower site at the Hampton-Sidney Water Tower, thus leaving large gaps in coverage for the deputies in the field to be able to contact their communications office. Overall, the updated radio communication system will serve everyone in the county from first responders to citizens by ensuring a reliable communication system and equipment is operable when the emergency arises. We had already started the discussion with our current vendor Motorola. Staff has looked into bringing a consultant on board to review our current system and make the, and make the project was included, I'm sorry, review the current system and make the project was included in the capital improvement plan and ranked fifth as a project. They anticipated using ARPA funds to cover the cost of the study. The county is currently looking at engaged at CTA Consultants LLC. CTA recently completed the radio study for Lunenburg County and has guided them through the radio system upgrade. The firm has provided services to over two hundred separate clients in close to six hundred locality and jurisdictions. The Lunenburg contract includes language that allows Prince Edward to buy off of the contract. The proposed project would include the following: interviews with agencies who currently access the Prince Edward County radio system, which will allow CTA to gather information about current operations, visit the existing radio assist, equipment sites and dispatch center, inspect the equipment at each site, and produce a site survey report for each site that collie catalogs the equipment, any site deficiencies, site pictures, equipment inventory, and recommendations for any site improvements necessary to make the site public safety grade. Review existing system and documentations, recent modifications, and any existing plans for improvements, alterations to the existing radio system. Use any system as built documents to verify the inventory of system equipment is accurate and matches what is installed. Provide a detailed summary of existing documentation as needed. Needs assessment report. Review of current frequencies determine if sufficient frequencies are available to meet the current and future needs. Use propaganda software to characterize expected coverage for radio system. Utilize traffic loading software to evaluate radio user capacity for existing radio channels and confirm capacity for future needs. Examine backhaul networks to determine the reliability and redundancy of the existing system. Review fiber connections to ensure redundancy in connectivity networks. Make recommendations for improvement of reliability and resiliency of backhaul network. Evaluate options and interoperability and recommend the best method of communication for county responders. Provide a risk benefit analysis of altern, alternatives and recommendations for improvements, alterations, or replacement of existing system. Hold on-site meetings to review, discuss, and provide feedback on alternatives. Develop a conceptual system design for the tap rated system alternative and cost estimates. Develop a detailed cost for the conceptual design based on a composite of actual costs experienced from recent procurements of similar systems. Develop final needs assessments report to provide an overview of current public safety radio communications operations, options, considerations related to improving current operations and technology infrastructures currently used and alternatives for new public safety communication radio system, and provide a final report including appendixes of final maps, diagrams, and make a final presentation to the Fire and EMS Committee. I know that's a lot. I can speak firsthand. I had been involved in this on the backside in Lunenburg. CTA does a fantastic job on their studies. Notaway just signed with them, their last board meeting to do the whole project for them. Amelia has signed with them. That and this company came very easy. There was nothing but praise and high marks for them across the board. The system in Lunenburg, in Lunenburg suffered greatly. Prince Edward is slowly getting in that direction because of the infrastructure and the equipment and the holes that were found in the sheriff's office. They took the first steps a couple of years ago, but they also have huge safety concerns and security issues with their system. Their officers have holes all over the county. They're by theirself. You know, there could be one officer on the west and one officer on the east, and they can't talk to each other. Great system, just needs to be upgraded, and I believe CTA can make that final push for us to give us an all-inclusive system that works for everybody for years to come. So I'll entertain any questions y'all have.
It appears to be something that's much needed.
What's the total cost?
So for her-
Anticipated.
Anticipated for the whole radio system or just?
Yeah, because forty thousand.
So the estimate we got for Motorola for the whole radio system was in the neighborhood of five million dollars. That's all in. But by, one thing about with her is she goes out for negotiated bids. They push for lower prices. They push for better deals. I feel confident that she could save a decent amount of money on the backside, even though she may look expensive, you know, on paper. The money you'll save in the system you'll get at the end of the day will be, will pay for itself. So. Her first cost is thirty-eight thousand for this study. And I dug right off the top of my head, the full contract, if she rode the whole project out, was a hundred and some thousand. I don't have the exact figure in front of me.
Can we get any grants for any of that?
Yeah, so once the study is done and we figure out where we're at, there's, I've been used to looking around for cost sharing and some grants and stuff like that. We just have to see where we need to go and what she recommends for us to purchase.
And potentially, we can use ARPA funds to help pay for the study. Where we've been told that's eligible as a project cost. So that initial forty grand could be, could come out of the ARPA funds if we needed to.
And this is a, this is a prolonged process. I mean, if you signed today, you're talking two years, two and a half years to finish this whole project all the way through. So it's not something that she's going to jump on and be done in a month, and we're going to come back. This will, this will drag out for a while, and she'll, she'll do her due diligence to make sure that what's done is right. So.
Would we have the same system as Amelia and Notaway, for instance?
That, that would be determined based on what they purchase and their study says. But she, if, if not, we would have interoperability between them. That would be a major factor in her decisions on saying we should go this direction or that direction. The sheriff's already has, they already have buy-in on a digital UHF system. I would imagine that we were going to stay somewhere in that ballpark with them. There's no reason to reinvent the wheel of something they already have. It does work.
I was wondering about the, the ease or the ability to, for sheriff to contact, say, the sheriff and Amelia or Notaway.
Yeah, it's very possible. I don't know what Amelia or Notaway even is going to look at. But I know that there are interoperability avenues in there, and she'll explore those and make sure that, that the sheriff can talk to the counties that he needs to if emergency arises.
You said Lunenburg up and running, running?
That they should be, they're supposed to go live in the fall, if everything goes as planned. She, she will not sign off on the system unless there's leaves on the trees. So if the system falls just short of that foliage falling off, the system, she won't sign off until the springtime of the following year. So, but they're supposed to go live in the fall this year. And it's been about, it's been about two years, starting in two thousand and nineteen.
Any other comments or questions? Could I entertain a motion? Any motion?
I think we'll do the study.
Subdued, okay.
If I can add, Madam Chair, I think, you know, we, we had sat down with Motorola and Major and Trey, and we talked to them about the options, and we're looking at the three, three to five million. And I can tell you, when you're spending that kind of money, I feel a lot better having, running through a consultant, have them look at it and do some comparisons. It's, it's, it's big money. And granted, we can look at trying to finance that with them over a period of time. We could still end up right back at Motorola, but I think all of us feel better knowing that we dialed the i's and crossed the t's and made sure that this is exactly the improvements that we needed for radio system.
And she's not, she's not tied to a vendor. She is a completely independent consultant. So she has no ties to any vendor. When she, she looks at a system, it's just looking at the system. So. And then, of course, we have the alternate state to say, you know, this is what we think is best, based on her opinion. So.
Okay, so is it agreed with everyone that we do a study on this?
Yes.
Okay. Patty?
Yes.
Okay, Luke?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
David? And Algra?
I just, I know we just took the vote. Do we have a motion in a second?
The motion was good, made good.
Okay. Patty, second. Okay, I just want to make sure I've got it written down. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, board.
You, you got-
Thank you, Trey.
Thank you, Trey.
Finance and HR reports. Sure.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
I come to you with two items this, this meeting. The first one is a budget amendment for the Circuit Court's office, and that's for a technology records management, maintenance, and secure remote access system that they've gotten money from COIN for. So that's just a reimbursement for a, for an item that they've already purchased. And then the second item is the Employee Committee and Employee of the Month program. So we have worked diligently between Doug and I and others to put together a program that we thought would benefit our employees to allow them to be recognized for what they do. We have a lot of good employees, and they don't get recognized. So as part of the program, Doug's offering to give up his parking spot for the, for the employee of the month. We're also going to look at a thirty-dollar gift card for, from a local vendor such as Fish and Pig or one of those Buffalo Wild Wings. Everybody loves those places. And then they would also be recognized at the board meeting. We do have a committee meeting purpose and draft document for your perusal. And we also have people that we are going to have on that committee. The finance manager would be a member, somebody from Social Services, the sheriff's office, Public Works. We'd have one constitutional officer on the committee, and then somebody from Piedmont Court Services.
Who chairman?
Um, I believe that the draft says that the chair will be elected.
Maybe that was intent.
Six representatives between the six. Okay.
Was that not correct, Doug?
I mean, that's correct.
So the committee will be making the recommendations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then we'll, you know, part of the, you know, we'll recognize them the following month at the board meeting. We'll also do a, you know, Facebook post to recognize them for the reasons they were also nominated. So they'll include a little write-up, something short. We'll present them something here at the board meeting each month, and that'll become a part of our regular process.
Madam Chair, just to make that clean, I would, I would make the motion to reimburse the money to begin with, if you want to do that.
To the clerk's office.
To the clerk's office.
I'm sorry.
I'll second. Yeah.
Also, David, could I get you to repeat that motion, please?
I make a motion that we reimburse the clerk's office for the money.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay. Spin some motion and sucker. Patty?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David? Pride, yes. So moved. Thank you so much.
And I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the Prince Edward County Employee Committee as outlined in the Employee of the Month concept, including the provision for providing gift cards up to thirty dollars per month for a recipient.
Second.
Spin motion for second. Patty?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Uh, Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Earl.
Five hundred and eighty over fifty dollars.
I got ready.
Nine hundred and twenty-two for twenty-two.
We can't do that.
Don't get it twice a year.
Okay, next we have the emergency. Okay, guys, emergency management report. Sarah Puckett and Trey Powell.
Yes, ma'am. So on March the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, that will be the two-year anniversary of when the World Health Organization first declared COVID-nineteen a pandemic, and two days later, President Trump declared a national emergency under which we still operate. So the good news is, is that COVID cases are significantly waning, and the CDC has changed its guidance under which it is recommending that Americans operate. They have now come up with a system for each community where they declare that your case count is low, medium, or high. And every, I think that changes, or that calculation is made every Thursday and is made available every Friday, so that you will know based on the prevalence of the cases in your community as to whether or not you should wear a mask inside. So at present, Prince Edward County is medium, which is good news. And that applies to everywhere in Prince Edward County, except for the Prince Edward County Courthouse, because the Prince Edward County Courthouse still operates, as you heard me telling our citizens at the beginning of the meeting, under a judicial order, and until our judiciary, our judicial branch changes that court order, the sheriff and all of us who reside daily in the courthouse still operate under that judicial order. Although I do expect, I think we're getting hints that maybe they're moving towards making some changes about how the courthouse will operate. We also know that the Department of Labor and Industry, which governs most businesses, including localities, is changing its rules and expect to repeal all of their COVID regulations on, I believe it's maybe March the nineteenth. But again, that will apply to everybody, except for those of us who are located in the Prince Edward County Courthouse. So just, just so as the sheriff's deputies don't catch a lot of flak for when people enter, it is not their fault. They're just doing what that court order still says we have to do. So with that said, and with the new guidance, and we don't know what direction the, either the Supreme Court or the chief judge is going to go, we still operate under the existing court order. But because we're transitioning, we hope, to a better place, we're going to discontinue, in the short run, what I'm going to call our monthly COVID reports that we've been providing for the last two years, and move on to other important emergency management, things of note as needed, I would say, because I know y'all are probably tired of us talking about COVID. So one of the things that is important and of note right now is the update, statutorily required update of the Prince Edward County Emergency Operations Plan. So I'm sharing a copy with all the members of the board, and I would ask you to take that home. And in your free time, if you wish to peruse it, you'll see that there's still a few items marked in red. We've got to fill in a few statistics. And then we're going to bring this back to you at your March twenty-ninth board meeting and ask you to approve it. It's a four-year update that's required by the Code of Virginia, and in fact, ours expires March the twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-two. In the meantime, as you do peruse it, if you have questions, feel free to- In the meantime, as you do peruse it, if you have questions, feel free to give me and Trey a call. And that way, we won't have to spend maybe as much time at the board meeting. Or if you have a lot of questions, we're happy to sit down and meet with each and every board member individually if you have concerns or questions about the contents. We have changed the structure some to have our Emergency Operations Center operate under branches instead of emergency support functions. So you'll know what, which basically means we're lumping things together because instead of trying to staff a lot of individual emergency support functions, the branches will function kind of as an umbrella over a number of those areas. So the other thing that I have of note is that yesterday, we had a pretty significant hazmat spill at Hampton and Sidney College. I was at home working on the update of the Emergency Operations Plan, and Trey, in fact, was off, had taken the day off. And at 2:45, he responded to that. There were 250 gallons of glycol spilled into enough of a waterway to consider it a water of the Commonwealth or a stream. So it required a DEQ response, and about five hours later, Trey got to go home. And about an hour after he went home, I got a call from the state hazmat officer who also responded from Danville because of the significance of the response. And he just wanted me to know what a really good job the county's deputy emergency management coordinator had done on the scene, how well he had represented the county, what a good job he'd done to coordinate the immediate response that was needed to stop the spread, and also had worked with all of the on-scene responders and the contractors and the college. And he said that he wished it would be Trey that would be meeting him at his next 100 scenes. And I told him we'd be happy to make that possible, as long as they weren't in Prince Edward County. That I would send him all over the region, but we did not want Ray to come to Prince Edward County for his next 100 responses. So I just wanted to say, give Trey the recognition that he deserved because the state officer made a point of calling me at home last night at 8 o'clock to make sure that I knew what a good job Trey had done, which I think we all know, but it's nice to. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Look forward to, Trey and I look forward to discussing the Emergency Operations Plan with anybody who would like to sit down and talk about it, and thank you. And hopefully, we won't talk about COVID again for a significant period of time.
Well, Sarah, we can peruse the work that's been done with this, so thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Okay. County Attorney's Report, Jerry.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I don't have an extensive report. We have been working, I worked with the redistricting, and I think that the committee of the citizens, that worked really, really well. Whoever put that in place, that was an excellent thing to do. And as always, Lynette and Sarah are top-notch to get all of those things organized, and they're both on top of their game, and it's an easy process to work through. And like another staff member's already said, Doug will keep us hopping, so we've worked on various things. The IDA has kept me very busy over the last month. And anyway, we're working on, I don't know if you want to pull the plug early on, but there's been rumors ever since I was hired about looking at the various ordinances of the county and comparing those with the state. And Doug and Sarah and I met just to get that ball rolling. So I know that'll be a good thing to, you know, we're going to make a, Doug's going to map out a plan for us, and we'll attack them, like when my husband says about an elephant, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? So anyway, it's a huge task, but we'll map out a plan and get that done. As far as I know, no one has sued the county. We're not involved in any lawsuits at the moment, that I'm aware of, could change tomorrow. Anyone have any questions, concerns, areas you want me to look for, look at?
Trey, at the last meeting, you mentioned about an issue that had come from the school, and they had contacted you or something, what a suit.
Right, right. And we had turned, we, there again, because it was involving the school, that's been turned over, I think, to our insurance carrier and also to the school. Not anything that really involved us as the county. I don't have any other update for it.
I was just curious.
Right, right.
Well, thank you, Trey. Anybody else comment or question?
Thank you very much.
Our county administrator's report, Mr. Stanley.
Madam Chair, members of the board, a few things I want to hit on. One, the DSS has submitted an application to the Virginia Department of Social Services for the Safe and Stable Families Program in the amount of 18,000, requires a local match at $2,790. And Kim and them are working on getting that submitted last week. Randy mentioned the courthouse exterior, we've got a vendor coming in to power wash the front and the sides of the courthouse, try to address some of the staining on the brick and the grout. The contractor also, Cal, can repair the joints as needed. Trying to get that work ahead, potentially renovation of the courthouse lawn later this summer. Tobacco Commission grant, the CRC submitted a grant application to the Tobacco Commission South Side Economic Development in the amount of $533,100 for the Heartland Innovation Park. Grant would fund A&E cost of design of water storage tank and booster station to serve the site. Also today, Chelsea and her office submitted a grant to the Virginia Tourism Commission for $20,000 for marketing of Farmville, Prince Edward County. Hampton and Sidney College will be submitting a request to the IDA for a $35 million bond to support financing the cost of planning, design, permitting, construction, development, renovation, redevelopment, equipping of certain residence halls, including White House Complex, Alphabet's Hall, and the Carpenter House and related facilities. The IDA will hold a public hearing on the request, it's meeting on March the 25th. We anticipate them coming to the board in April for consideration of a resolution to support the request. The IDA has approved similar requests in the past for Hampton and Sidney back in 2018 in the amount of $15 million, and Faram College in 2016, the amount of $9.9 million. The county is working with Sands Anderson to update our bond policies and guidelines. The IDA board approved those last week. And again, the bonds do not represent any debt of the county or the IDA. It's just a conduit for which they can get lower financing. Last week, I completed budget meetings for the FY 2022 and 2023 budgets with departments and constitutional officers relative to their proposed budget submissions. We had to reschedule last week's joint finance committee meeting with the school system. Dr. Johnson's still awaiting budget numbers from the state. Right now, the General Assembly is scheduled to be complete their work this Saturday. So fingers crossed, we hope they'll finish their job this week. Our next scheduled meeting, as we discussed, March 15th, 5:30 PM at the middle school. County maintenance building, we brought in a contractor to work on the roof of the maintenance building out of County Shop Road, and able to put about $1,200 in some patching, which we hope will buy us about three to five years, and Lou were replacing the roof. Planning and zoning building inspections, office staff had completed the relocation of these offices into the former Commonwealth Attorney Suite. We appreciate any feedback that you may get from the public. We just got news this week, our Virginia retirement system rates will increase from 8.56% to 9.72% for the FY 2023. In FY 2024 years, this represents an annual increase of about $57,500 to our rates. Lots of things go into determining the rate structure, including, you know, law enforcement folks who are able to retire earlier, all those things. But we'll plug that stuff into the budget. Later this week, we're meeting with Wayne Ramsey from the Board of Realtors with concerns about our county parcel information and the GIS system implementation. We'll be able to give some feedback to you on that. And since last month's meeting, we've been working on updating our public service signage and hope to have it up in the next 30 days or so. We've also started posting of advertisements on the county Facebook page. So you'll see, in addition to the newspaper, you'll see our ads for public hearings posted on the Facebook page as well. Last thing, as Terry mentioned, and I'll pass a few of these around. Just, under the board's been asking about updates and review of the code. If you've got an extra copy, Bobby, if you could give Terry one over there. Terry mentioned, we've sat down, we've looked at each section of the code. We've looked at trying to come up with somebody responsible to head up, lead the review. We've got a committee broken up for each of the groups. A lot of these folks don't know they're on a committee yet, but they'll find out at staff meeting next week. But the ultimate goal is to develop a timeframe and then be able to update the board on a monthly basis on the status, the update of the code. I know the board's been antsy about that, and we've got a process in place to try to get this done in the next year. And some of them, obviously, like the elections, that'll be complete once we adopt this new ordinance section. So some things in the works, some others that we've got a lot of work to do. But at least we've kind of, as Terry said, we've broken down into bite-sized pieces that we can try to swallow. So if you have any questions there, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we are moving to closed session.
Madam Chair, if I can interrupt you just a second.
Sure.
So you had on the agenda.
Oh, that's right.
A3, and then we had in the addendum pack to add an additional item referencing 2.2-3711A1, annual performance of the county attorney, that's in your table pack. And also, like, since we have Mr. Hines here, we can take advantage of his presence. If we could add 2.2-3711A6, discussion or consideration of investment of public funds. I'd like to add discussion of the Sandy River Reservoir Project, we get an update from Joe.
In closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There's three sections there, it's Sections 3, 1, and 6.
Okay, I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in closed session for discussion and consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose of economic development, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the county pursuant to the exemptions provided in Section 2.2, that's 3711A3 of the Code of Virginia, and for discussion and consideration of the annual performance of the county attorney pursuant to the exemptions provided for in Section 2.2, 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. And the third one, yes?
I will read that for you.
Thank you, sir.
Section 2.2, 3711A6, discussion, consideration, and investment of public funds referencing the Sandy River Reservoir Project.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Patty, let me roll call Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim? Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry? David?
Yes.
Okay. So moved. We're moving in closed session.
Yes.
Okay. So moved. We're moving in closed session.[258.84]
Is it on?
Start meeting. Share.
I repeat, I move this Board of Supervisors turn to open session.
One second. We have to have more votes.
Welcome to the Prince Edward County Conference. Please stand by. You'll be joined in shortly.
Patty, your vote?
Yes.
Doesa?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Oh, Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, now, let's see. Whereas the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed session this date pursuant to the affirmative record vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed sessions was of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the board that such closed sessions was conducted and conformantly with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby certifies it to its best of each member's knowledge on public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed session to which this certification resolution applies and only by public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed session was conveyed, were heard, discussed, or considered in this meeting by the board. Is there...
Second.
Second to the motion. Patty?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
That motion is passed.
I make the motion that we recess.
Actually, we've got just a couple other items. Out of the chair, you've got, if I can hit, you've got thank you for Wheels on Wheels new packet, you have some supervises form, and lastly, you've got the various monthly reports from end control, building official, KNE, KNE CRC, and tourism just for informational purposes at action.